Motion to accept the consent agenda, please.
Mike.
That's pretty good. Good thought of that.
All voters, please say aye.
Aye.
Both voters carries. Okay, department reports, public works, Mike? I know we've read it, but you want to come up and just get that question, because we can't hear you on the mic.
Was there any questions?
By the time you get up here, you might have one.
Okay.
Everybody read his report?
Oh, yeah.
Is there any questions by the council? Should I ask that before you go up here, huh, Mike?
I did, but I was on my way.
No questions? Okay, Mike, thank you for your report.
Well, you're welcome.
Sweet, sure.
Okay.
Okay. Sam is not here.
Yeah.
Okay. Then Devon. Everybody read her comments?
Yes, so on the building permit services, we locked, and there's no progress made on that. Does the mayor need to talk to the mayor?
Brandon came over last week, and we kind of asked him like where they were at it, and he kind of made it sound like he was waiting on us, but I don't know what he's waiting on us for, so.
Devon, do you have a microphone there? Is it okay?
Yeah.
He might have been waiting on us to decide if we like the idea of doing it where we pay for those services.
Okay.
And so I think it is on us to move forward.
To move forward with it. For next council. Okay.
We might need a work session at some point.
Okay. Any other questions for Devon? Well, we're moving right along here.
Just give me one minute. I know I already read it once, I was trying to like go back through it to make sure.
Are you going to Devon or are you going to Jill?
Her fingers are down the water.
We are. I think I'm. Oh, I'm good.
Jill.
It was in the same report, so, yeah.
On the record, congratulations on getting annual report completed instantly.
Thank you.
So, we can ask a question about the. And deliver the items we've been.
Was signed today? I don't know if Sam or.
I don't think he's picked it up yet.
Why did it sign it today?
Okay, so it hasn't.
It hasn't been.
It hasn't been delivered yet.
Okay. It's just in the process. Any other questions?
I don't know, I guess I just wanted to ask Sam or somebody where we were at with the whole police business, but just where we are, I guess.
Hopefully, you should have eventually.
Maybe.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Sure, you saved them all for Sam, didn't you?
That's perfect.
That's all right.
That's okay.
Well, and he had given us a written report, it had to be up today.
Well, I'll mention that to him next time I see him, okay?
Okay.
All right. So all of your department reports have been noted and paperized and summarized and computerized and everything else, so we're good to go and move on. Public hearing and special presentations, we have nothing, public comments on the agenda, nothing, but we do have the first one on a new business. City Pluto Agenda Item Request Form from Karen Magner, she is here in the audience. To answer, what is your question, Karen, discuss with council the water meter access letter received.
I got it all straightened up for Mike. Mike, I think you went and checked it.
You need to get up here by the mic.
Uh-oh, I used to think it's for mics.
Well, just pretend it's not there.
Yes, sir.
Just stand right there, it'll pick you right up.
Yes, I talked to Mike, was it last week or the week before?
Yeah, I think you gave me a call last week, yeah.
Yeah, I got all the cards shoved up, but I, I've been so busy. I got a grandson that's graduating Saturday, and I haven't had time to call the permit guy to come give me permits for them all. I'm working on it slowly, and as soon as I'm done, my brother is not putting one more empty car or going on my property without me shoving it up.
Turn your mic off. You're on the mic.
Okay, well, I got it done.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
You're welcome, well, you could take the guys at my house.
Okay, well, whoever.
My nephew, I'll tell him.
Okay, that was the first one, we got that one accomplished. Number two, which was number one, on our paper, agenda items requested on the water meter access. Who's going to talk about that, Devon?
That's for my.
Or who?
Yeah, you're on the review.
Number two? Planning Commission?
There you go.
Whatever the water, right, was that?
That was our number one, yeah.
Oh.
She got it, I'll take care of it.
It was her fault, didn't it? Okay, planning commission recommendation, development agreements. Are you going to talk?
So, planning commission would like to. Get some type of development agreement for the Calhoun Meadows. Development. And it's in our code, in our land development code that we can do this, and we just need to cut, you guys need to come up with one. That you'd like to do, I guess.
And that's what all of those were, were traces then? Is that what that was? As I saw that there were some highlighted areas.
Yeah, just that we can, it's already, we don't have to put it in our, in our landfill code, it's already in there, so that's done. And you guys are in charge of all the contracts and agreements, so we need to come up with one for that development, or a general one for every development that comes in.
So, the ones that are all highlighted, the procedures for approvals, those are all options, is that?
I think that's, those are timeline things, that's agenda item three.
Is it? Okay, yes, okay, sorry. All right, I thought that maybe they all sort of ran together because they were.
Julie, is that your mic there?
No.
We don't have, that is our mic, can you turn that on and we'll just talk louder?
We don't have one of them, is it?
We're loud enough.
Thank you, Eric.
Where's your panel?
Okay, sorry, um, all right. So, then the highlighted, the yellow highlighted things, what are they, suggestions or?
That's just telling us that we're allowed to.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And that we're allowed to sign fees, but yeah.
Okay.
I've started looking at different, there's really extensive, I'm gonna show you, start looking to find us some ones, so I think next meeting, if you guys want to move forward with that, I'll, we'll get some examples. I don't know if you guys are looking for anything specific, we've never done them before, so I'm not.
I, I'd like it if you wrote Steve Burch in on that, because he's gone both sides of the course before, and that would be good. It's, from talking to Steve, it sounds like it's important for both parties, the city and the builder.
Yeah.
Because it kind of sets our contract so that we can't change things out from under them, and, and they will commit to do things like sidewalks and street posts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve Burch, lead chairs are planning, who's the president of planning?
Okay.
Sorry, I have a ten year old, like. I, we bake our own shit.
So I, I think that that's a thing that kind of gets negotiated with the developer towards, towards when we hit whatever point that is.
Okay.
So I think when we're, I, I think when we're close to saying, yes, you can build, if we're talking about. The Meadows project.
Yeah.
Then once, we would want to be prepared to have a sit down with them and.
Present that too.
Yeah, and then, and from Steve, it sounds like there's some give and take there, and that's where we kind of codify, codify that, that contract with them as to what they promised to do and, and what we promised to do.
Okay.
But it wouldn't hurt to have some examples.
Absolutely, we should be ready, I guess, yeah, we should be prepared to.
Yeah, what, I guess, come up with something to say, like, I guess, what do you guys think of this, and then go from there.
Wouldn't it be possible to look, to ask, or not to look at their agreement, because don't, aren't they going in over there also?
I don't think that Winlock's doing much of that, the week.
I don't know if they have, I could do much of ask them if they've got ones.
I don't know that they have those.
Well, I was, I was told, but we're not there. Some of the items that they missed in their first contract, sidewalks and lights over the sidewalks, so now the city has discussed with, they're bringing those in. We don't want to be in that situation.
No, we don't want to be stuck in that.
But if I like to get the theoretical approval from all this, I'd like to get us one side fits all, if we can. Because we're going to have more contractors coming eventually, we don't need to, we have something for them, something for them, something for them, something different. So we can make it generic for one side.
Generic enough, and then we can fill in the areas where.
But we don't want to get any, I'm not signing anything till we get everything keys crossed, and I have thought of, especially, like I said, for the sidewalks and the parking that they have any issues with, now they've got the city involved in their parking problems and their light problems and their sidewalk, I don't want those problems.
Yeah.
Well, it still might be interesting enough when Lock has an agreement with them.
Yeah.
Or what they're, if they're, he can pick through it and keep the good parts and add the parts that are missing, or, I mean, it would just be another example.
Yeah, I can give you guys a certain point to go off of.
Yeah.
I have a question, are the highlighted areas on?
The agenda, I did the same thing.
They came up with, no, I just pointed.
Yeah, I, I did the same thing, I thought.
Ways that need one more there.
Okay, yes, sorry, I was just.
We're getting experience, we'll tell you that.
Because I did it too.
So, can I, so I'm, it's on the planning commission, can I speak to the agenda item?
You're on the planning commission, and we're talking about planning commission. Come on up.
All right. Example, so I think what's in front of you is the planning commission's request to, even though it's in our codes, is to be a little more emphatic about wanting development agreements in these larger developments that are going to be happening. The other can, the other thing that the planning commission discussed is, it's not just sidewalks, streetlights, it's also livability requests that, you know, this is going to be a fairly large population influx, and what is the developer, you know, providing to make the overall community more livable as well? So it may not be within that development that the city is asking for things, so. But the agenda item that's in front of you, I believe, is a request from the planning commission to reiterate that we are wanting to enter a development agreement moving forward.
Good, thank you, Susan.
Devon, you need something from us?
No, because it's already in our, I don't think so, so, we'll just go forward there.
Great.
Okay, number three, land development code, permit timelines.
And these highlighted items. Highlighted the.
Except for the last one, which appears to be.
Not a choice.
Yeah, I thought that was a bad choice to highlight.
And it's not a choice.
So.
Are these all choices, or, because I was a little confused about.
This is what is currently, we currently are doing.
Do you have a feel for what Todd thought the short ones, the exceedingly rapid ones were?
It seemed like fourteen days. I know he brought that up.
Yeah.
Said it, once I read through them, it seems like they're all kind of, it's fourteen days, twenty eight days, they're all kind of repetitive of each other.
So, maybe it's divide them up into. It's, if it's, yeah, if it's, I mean, I can understand, like, if it's a lot of defense agreement, or that's it.
Yeah, but like, it seems like the subdivisions, those ones, I would think would take a little longer.
Yeah, that should grow with the size of.
The size, yeah.
Yeah.
So do we need to put something in a motion?
To have planning commission amend the land development code.
Okay.
To change these.
That's the motion?
Yes.
I made a motion that we have the planning commission work on changing these, that give us time where they think it's needed.
So here's second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Eric and seconded by Kathy. Any other discussion on it?
Yeah, what, what constitutes the public comments, do you post a notice, or?
It goes in the paper, and then it's posted on the website and out there, and then we have a meeting, so the public can come in and comment, and give their comments or concerns on the topic.
Okay.
So, it's also goes within three hundred feet within that property, to, we give letters to people within three hundred feet of the property.
Any more discussion?
What, do we, you know, at what point on here is, is the pause for SIPA happened? I saw in here, there was a. So the purple one is.
The purple one takes seven.
Yeah. Also, the purple one is thirty five to ninety, okay, yeah, so I guess just have them figure out what's.
A better timeline.
A better timeline.
Okay, more discussion, let's go on, all voters, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next on the. New business amendment ordinance number seven seven one, attachment A, fee schedule. Usually I have something to read, but I don't have nothing to read on this one, Devon, so I'll go down in the hours.
Thank you for the highlighting.
There's stuff on.
Well, sure.
Right at the top of the quarter.
You kidding me?
You're going to have to look really close.
That, those three lines, that's it?
That's it, yeah. It's basically to just, because it's very vague, and the fee schedule of what the three thousand dollar fee is, and then the two through fifteen, it's just making it more detailed of what it actually means.
So what it says here, defined grant water, single fee is for the single family resident on one parcel. Two to fifteen is for multiple family residents on one parcel. Sewer, single family fee is for a single family resident on one parcel, and two dash fifteen is for multiple family residents on one parcel. So I made a motion to accept this.
I make a motion that we accept as read.
Go here, second.
I said.
You're going to. Anybody made the motion, and second, third, thirded it, and.
And here we go.
And here we. Everybody understands.
I have a question, so, what happens, what happens over fifteen? It says two to fifteen.
It starts over. Back at one.
No, I don't know.
So if there are thirty. Oh, that's, it's double what two fifteen says, is that what? Two through fifteen.
Two through fifteen, so fifteen.
So sixteen would be three thousand again, and then seventeen through whatever would be the twenty five hundred, and then if there was more than that, then it would start over after that.
Is there a reason why we give the discount? Is it less?
I haven't, we have no, we don't know why it's like that.
So should it be this down?
I don't think this should be a discount. I mean. It's, these fees are what go to help offset the rest of the people's, you know, the water bills of the existing people that have paid in, so if we make it cheaper, go ahead, Charles.
Sorry, I think when they were initially done, it was to promote development, because everybody was like, it's too expensive to, you know, I don't, can't do a triplex at nine thousand dollars apiece, you know, and so I think it was to promote more development years back when it was set.
Sounds better.
But, yeah, I don't think it fits out.
Yeah, I don't think it fits anymore now.
No, no.
Drop the two through fifteen rate.
When I did talk with Mike Johnson a little bit about it from GNO, he kind of said that a lot of the times when you have multifamily units, big apartment complexes, there is, people have, you know, other cities have offered discounts, and it's usually because they don't actually use the amount of water allotted that, you know, a city would allot, and so it's like a kind of a way to give them a little bit of a break on it, but he said he doesn't see it very often.
Mike, does your workload go down?
No, usually if it's a duplex or complex, it's like they all have separate years.
They still, yeah.
So, I mean, the hookup fees should be. Look at. I'd like to remember the approach. The motion that's on the floor to. Get rid of this.
Sure, we've had several houses built in King County. The initial fee is because they run the pipe from the main to the facility, with a discount, anything on that same facility is, I'm off that pipe from the main, that's why there's typically a discount for those. So if you build a triplex, you're only paying for one fee from the main to the facility, and then you pay an additional for anything after the first meter. Typically, King County goes up to twenty, if I remember right, before they go back and start all over. Because I think that, as it was explained to me when I questioned it, they said, because, kind of like Mike said, they don't use all the water.
Right.
For that particular branch off the main, but after twenty meters, that branch can't handle any more water. So you start over, because you have to put another branch off the main to that facility. That's how it's explained to me, though.
Okay. Eric, you still want to amend that?
I don't think I have enough knowledge to amend it.
On table? But this will have to be done.
We should probably get it done.
We should get it done.
Is. Then you, what if you were to just raise the bottom number two, could it change us? What, do we have that many triplexes?
Well, this is going to affect our large subdivisions by name as well.
If you guys plan on giving a discount over fifteen houses, maybe. But they'll use separate branch to every house.
Well, those all be on their own lots.
Does that count as a discount, though, if you're going to, if a developer comes in, says, I want seventy five percents? Does that fall into place, or does he pan the whole?
Yeah, is that.
Full, because they're.
So it's not.
And it's a single family residence.
Well, that's, that's what I was trying to.
Clear, that's what I was.
It would just be like an apartment dwelling, or a duplex, or a triplex.
So we're talking about single family with the. What it says here, single fee is for single family residents. And one parcel. Then it goes up from two to fifteen is for multiple family residents on one parcel.
Okay.
So that doesn't, what I'm hearing you guys say is that it's supposed to be charged per family, every hookup, per family, and only you.
Like, there was a duplex, the first one would be the three thousand, and then the second one would be the discounted rate, because it's on one person.
Okay, that makes sense, okay, that, I was.
So if I had a fourplex, the first one we charge, pull them out?
Yeah.
So the three would be good, given a discount.
Because they're already hooking in, like you said, you've already put in, so they're hooking into this, so the cost is less, because this is already going to take the main pipe or one house, and already take care of it with the first fee.
And that in tune would have more businesses or corporations or wherever coming to buy more houses, because they can get a discount, I would think. To go.
Well, not that it's listed.
Residential.
Not corporations.
I know, but I mean, you know what I mean?
It is, like the apartment building up here has one big meter, and I don't know how they separate their billing, how they do it, I think PJ Guy or some, that is the property manager up there, but, so it's one big meter that they read, and I don't know how that's dispersed throughout the units.
I don't know either, like.
They get charged for each unit, they get charged nineteen times, because of the nineteen.
Right.
This is how.
When it was hooked up, I don't know how it's done, like the hookup fees, I don't know how they retire them.
I was looking to put. Old people housing up behind Rachel Phillips, there's two lots there.
Yeah.
Michelle said, no, you cannot do a complex, you have to do two duplexes, and that means two hookups from the water, which means you pay for the initial one twice, because it's two separate buildings on two separate lots, and then you pay the discount fee for the second hookup for each one of them.
Okay.
That's what she said.
Okay.
So, it's a pipe basically to the parcel.
I don't know if that's right or.
Is that, is that because it was on two different parcels?
Yes, because I said I want to put a fourplex there, and she said, no, it has to be two duplexes.
So, yeah.
Go back to the motion.
I'm sorry.
So that's why the motion of.
What, just re-changing the wording, the initial one?
Changing the wording, and then we'll do the two through fifteen.
As I just read.
That was right, no, yeah.
Clarified, clarified.
What we're looking at is what we got on our paper here.
Yeah.
No change.
Right.
No change. Well, what I just read is where you want to stay at. Water, single family fee, that, that's the one you want in motion.
Yeah.
And for the same thing.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on it? Okay, let's go on, all voters, please say aye. Both, motion carries. We have ARPA funding and trust water meter project. Did we get a chance to read over that? Do you understand it? Don't understand it?
No, I do.
But what, why are you agreeing?
No, I'm not.
Oh.
It's a grimace, not a grin.
It's very much a grimace.
What's your question?
What's your question? What's your answer?
I'm just gonna sit over here and listen.
Okay.
Um, no, 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 um. I think there really isn't a big choice there, so my only sad day is then it's sort of like, um, cat and chickens prefer eggs hatch because we don't know if we're gonna get another additional chunk of money to pay for the software portion, which was the seven thousand five hundred dollars, so I'm just gonna, I mean, we have to finish the project, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna make a motion that we, I'm gonna make a motion that we that we use the rest of the, the balance of the ARPA funds to finish the needed amount in the water. I should just want a meter project, I couldn't think what they were called, the things that you, and I'm trying to remember how much it was. They're requesting twenty-nine thousand, is that right? Four hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents? Anyway, that's. What, I said I'd make a motion that.
I'll second that.
I know, it's fine, I'm just waiting, don't look at me.
Calm down, girl.
I'm just waiting.
I thought our archa balance is much lower than that, so are, is there things that we have planned to spend that we're gonna not do that because of that?
Yeah, the seven thousand five hundred dollars.
That would be the seventy-five hundred for the software, which, again, I put in there that, that quote from All Information Finds from twenty-twelve. The software company just changed hands, so I'm trying to get a new updated quote on that. And then, but that, I know that when we met before, we talked about cameras, the wifi in here, all that will be gone unless the new funding, when, until we receive that new funding, if and when, it's supposed to be this month, but I haven't heard on when.
And if we don't receive it, then we have to figure out another way to pay for software.
Yes, yes.
That money was earmarked.
For that, yes.
But now it's going to finish the water.
Yes.
And do these totems include what was not billed by Winlock?
Um. So, on the smaller sheet, that twenty-nine, if, if that is included on, like, the outstanding, down at the bottom where I have outstanding, not billed, that is included in those numbers.
That would be covered with the twenty-nine thousand.
Yes, because it, with those, with that outstanding and not billed is that twenty-two thousand two hundred, and then the new, the bigger meters, the one inch and the one and a half inch meters, is an additional five thousand two hundred. That puts the budget over by twenty-six thousand, and so the twenty-nine thousand would allow for shipping charges, taxes, any inflation of anything by the time we get it. If it's under that twenty-nine thousand, fantastic, but the project does need to be finished too, so.
I'm worried when you say now that the whole software thing may change, and that's it, when you say two thousand twelve, you, you know it's probably gonna be more than seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that, that's just the paper I found since twenty-twelve, so, yeah, yeah.
Then you know that when we get a new.
I can actually ask Winlock, they just got that, the new UB two program, so I can ask them what they paid on theirs too.
That'd be good, you know?
Yeah.
No matter what, it's still gonna go up, I'm sure since you know, well.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna be more than what we assumed it was gonna be, so. Okay, one minute.
So what was your motion again?
My motion was that we, that we use the rest of the ARPA funds to pay the overage for the water meter project and finish it, and.
And then the second? Sorry. Motion is made, excuse me, Michelle, one second, buddy. Is there any more discussion on it? Some more discussion as well, all of the fairer please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have nothing else on new buildings. Unfinished business, nothing, other business, nothing, other game, but. Where?
Papers.
I know, I saw it somewhere. I got it. I knew I read it. Thanks, Tom. Only like six or seven pages worth. Especially the dance permit application by Donna Wallace. I got lots of paperwork, you guys probably got lots of, whatever you got, screen work.
Well, I have that, I have something else on mine too, so let's do that.
Okay. All in a fair motion, do you accept this?
I make a motion that we accept the event, special event application by Donna Wallace for the cheesesteak application.
Do I hear a second? Okay, motion is made by anybody, seconded by Jamie. Is there any more discussion on it?
Yeah, yes, so, so how did, how did last year go with sharing this, the, with Seembo running?
What we did, we ended up doing to-go menus, but they took over their place, and then if anybody called in, we would take orders through the fence and bring orders down, that would include, and it seemed to work out really well, had no problem with Mike, and he thought it went good, it wasn't a lot of orders, but it was helpful to them knowing it was there, and they didn't have to have like a food truck or something else. It helped us because they didn't have a food truck there, so it did help us as far as our only that went to.
Did COVID have a little effect on the dollar or?
It had a little effect, it had a large effect.
I think this year.
A very large effect.
Well, I think this year should be a lot better.
Oh, that, no, last year was a very large, big effect.
Okay.
We went from probably, we had no idea to expect that many people, we had people from inside of their cash register area to the south side waiting in line to get in, wow, that's never happened.
Wow.
And I think we're just so excited to get out, but the good news is with the many people as we had, we had no issues. So that was really nice, but, you know, I'm real stickler for not over serving, and I'm real stickler for get out if you don't like it. I have no problem getting people out.
Oh, sweet.
Plus, I have security, it helps me a lot.
We had extra officers here from other towns helping out.
Yeah, I didn't have a, I don't think, I think we did have to call them once, but it wasn't inside our place, it happened outside, and then they went over next door, and then back again, they were kind of trying to play that game that was the wife caused the problem with the husband, is what it was all about, but, yeah, but not really good, but it wasn't caused from anything that happened inside our area or inside chimney area, they had them between the two of them. So like I said, I have usually at least six security guards, and Logan was talking to Sam the other day, and Logan asked Sam if he could get some of his cops from up north, if they would come down off duty and help security for me, I thought that was really cool, he was kind of excited about doing it. Sam said he could, as long as they have permission from them.
From their orgos, yeah, and Logan's very excited.
Yeah, very nice guy.
I just hope we don't start bringing out those teasers or surgeries and be like.
Okay, whatever works.
Yeah.
Keep those people under control.
Okay, motion on the floor, and second, and we discussed it, any more discussion? Okay, let's hold on, all of the fairer please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Got that one done. Is there anything missing?
We just need to do something with this estimate.
It just goes with the ARPA, okay, because they came in this morning.
Devin, can you talk a little bit on the lawyer stuff?
It's just informational for you guys.
It's huge, well, you guys have an online screen.
It basically states that you have to have a physical place to have a meeting now, because a lot of places were still just remote, I mean, we don't have, we haven't been in person, so it's just all, it's a lot of jumbo stating that you have to have an in-person meeting now. You can't just be completely remote.
So it's worded up.
Yeah.
We already saw this on a hacker that we've got a while.
They sent it twice, I just got it.
Or maybe I was just saying that, maybe that came in from.
I think there was something like MRSC.
Something, yeah, MRSC was talking about this, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we saw this back, yeah.
Is there any other comment or input?
Can I, can I make it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, do we have anything planned for the one hundred and thirtieth question, you know? Just out of curiosity, because that's coming up.
What is it?
I think it's in October. Or something like that.
Yeah.
It is in October?
Just throwing it out there.
Steve, you were around here, you found it.
You know what, I said it to probably make public media, we're having quirky stuff, bring it up. Thanks, Eric. How was that all?
I told Mike, bring it out, your hands, that's on the record.
Well, we can make something out, we made something out of a cheeseball drop, made something out of a quad parade, and we're always acceptable to make something out of something. And it turns out pretty dang good, let me say, we've got a new cheeseball drop this year, July third midnight, with fireworks approved and everything, because of the rain in the port. So that's our new thing for July coming up. Anyway, any other things you guys want to talk about? If not, we'll close the meeting.
Joe? So I have something before I bring it up to the chamber, okay? We're looking to buy a forty by one hundred tent.
Okay.
Be, be allowed to put it in the parking lot there by Chinese, and put in permanent staking into the asphalt and stuff, so we don't have to restate every time it goes up or down.
I don't know about that one, because that's our property.
Right.
I know.
But I'm just thinking, you know.
I guess.
Community received, could have a big tent there.
Yeah.
Instead of people standing out in the snow and rain or whatever, farmer's market could be under there. So, right, so. But if it's a no-go, I'm not even gonna bring it up.
How many people park on that ten, they're not using it? Because I know when they do the farmer's market, that behind me where my employees park on that front, that's packed, there's no place for my employees to park a lot of time too, so if that was a covered tent all the time, I don't know how that would be on purpose.
It wouldn't be permanent.
Oh.
But I would want, you have to stake that thing. Especially that.
I guess my question, where did the stakes add, I know.
They would have to go into the asphalt.
I know, I know that, but, like, like in a parking stall, someplace.
If you guys see the size of the tent, where they go, you'd have to probably put like, little three covers over there.
Yeah, like a tiny, like a tiny thing, in, in, in the ground.
Yeah, yeah, you tie it out in the ground, you just have to figure out how to cover them.
Well, the easiest way to cover them is with a plate of top, make it travel.
Right.
Just put a plate up, plug it up, there you go. Mike, what are your, what's your thoughts?
I think we need to look at your anchors and see what you plan on covering. So, because I think they need to be passing down somehow, the anchors.
Yeah, because then when I tie like slotted into there, concrete and in or something.
I don't think they're gonna have to be concrete again, but the, the cap part would have to be fastened, yeah, so that when cars drive over, yeah.
You'd like one of those creek covers of our water, shut off.
I don't think plastic could work.
Next one.
I mean, just like the water.
The next question I have, Jill, would be vandalism, because we're already getting plenty of that down to park right now. Our restrooms and park facility, and we don't have a park host yet, so that's another thing we're working on, but.
If the people that were there, are they gone now?
Yes.
Yeah.
They didn't get on business for a while now. And that's some of the vandalism that we're creating. So, and that's another thought, you know, for vandalism, it's something that's probably have to be locked down, so then they have more money invested in your tie-in.
I don't like.
There's something to think about. Mike and I could go check it out, see approximately where we might put them, that's my only question, before I tear up asphalt and start putting in concrete, and it's gonna cost money, which we don't have a lot of.
Well, we look up to pay for that.
We could give donations.
We could get a grant for that.
Okay.
But Mike. Install all of the, the tie-ins and stuff, so.
Yeah, I don't think it would impede anything, I think they are, well, the boats and everything else, but as long as they're, the anchors are accommodating, I don't.
Surely.
What about repairs, who would be responsible for upkeeping it, something broke on?
I'll do, what, Mike, what anchors do you mean, the tent or what?
Yeah, or the con- concrete or crumbles around it, or anything, the place breaking, but who's gonna be responsible for keeping that upkeep?
I would say the problem is the city, it's one city property.
I would say if the chamber's down, but he went from that. It would be expensive, you know, it's like if the tent blew down.
Yeah.
We'd have to buy a new paint or whatever, so, so maintenance.
Yeah, I think, oxy and everything, that would, if we put a, have a good lane to travel, kind of where we're going, guys. I think it's possible, it's a thing I, I would want my. Buy up on.
Well, I would definitely, yeah. Might get a recommended contractor.
So that's something we need to, how many holes, ready, how much work should cost to maintain it? Are you gonna be able to drive one with traffic and boats and stuff on there, I think it should be.
Well, usually with a tent that size, it comes with a set of plans on how to get fastened down.
I mean, the issue would be, would be so close to that winter building that it may not even be possible to tie it down, but that would block a lot of wind anyway, if it's uptight against the winter building.
Yeah. Yes, that building's gonna be for a long time. Speaking of the park, I have one more thing to bring up. Mr. Stover and his wife were camping in our park, was it back in April, they camped in there, I think, Jill?
They rented the kitchen back in April.
They rented the kitchen.
They rented the kitchen? Okay, but they still rented the kitchen and they stayed there?
Didn't stay the night, no, they just rented the kitchen for the day.
But she said the restrooms were not open.
They were not open, they.
Just for that day.
Just for that day.
How much did they pay for the rental?
Fifty-five dollars.
She was griping to me about not having a restaurant open, which was my fault, and then communications with Mike on the restaurant being open for that one, kitchen day. So, I made an offer to her to pay back half, but, but I take counsel's suggestion. Should I give her any back? It was my fault.
Or give them another use, or, or give them another use, no fee.
And the bathrooms will be open.
And the bathrooms will be open.
Okay, I'm okay with that too. Because they're longtime residents here, they're the first ones to use the park. Everybody feel that? Okay, Devin, you making up that, please, thank you. Other than that, any good welfare, anything go on, nothing? I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Bernice Buzz will just pass away. Long time friend. Damn, she makes some good Swedish pancake, oh my god. She, she liked cooking for me, I ate about ten, fifteen of them. Anyway, I'm sad to hear that, I wasn't positive, I haven't heard, I haven't seen. Anyway, I'm sad to hear that. I wasn't positive, I haven't heard, I haven't seen it in the papers, but. Anyway, I wish you had my wealth. I grew up with all the kids, all. So. There's lots of steam that was out there, so, I mean, family, anyway.
So he's not as old as you said he was.
God, God, that would be 100 years old this year.
Yes, he is, he's gonna be 100 years old.
And he's doing, he's doing pretty good, he's been out and about more and been going out to breakfast in the morning and getting out and about, so.
Well, he's been through a lot.
Yes, he has.
Because I heard she was, had Alzheimer's also, real bad.
Really bad.
For a long time.
I talked to Carl, it was Friday night, I talked to Don on Saturday night. And Don Junior, Carl said, I told him I'm sorry to hear about his mom, that don't, don't. It was the best thing because she'd been suffering and it all, hard, hard on the whole family and then Don said that his dad was doing pretty good, you know, up and down. They were married 57 years.
Yeah. I believe that.
Very good people. Yeah, they want them.
Anyway, my, my dog's been at along the, with their lost parents, because humans don't need to select two days apart, we see one, you saw the other.
Yes.
Anyway, that's all I got for giving up there, anybody else? Now the entertain a motion to adjourn. Paid a motion by Emily to adjourn and seconded by Jamie. All of the fairer say aye. Opposed? Thank you everybody for having me.